Welcome back to our Springfield City Council debate on K W T O live from our K W T O studios. Before the break, we went over the rules and we will continue to remind our listeners as we go along tonight, Jason, about the rules for the debate and the format for the debate. But for now, we welcome the four candidates vying for General Counsel seat A. That's Alex Ayton, Justin Burnett, Randy Allen, and Heather Hardinger. And Jason, we'll send it over to you to begin our questions.
Our first question is for all four of you, we'll be starting with Justin with the answer. You'll have 60 seconds to respond. Springfield's poverty rate has hovered for years around the 25% mark. With one in four residents living at or below the poverty line, what do you intend to do in the next two years to alleviate poverty-related issues?
Well, thank you for that question. It's an important question. It's the most important question facing our community at the moment. One of the things that I've made a central focus of my campaign is poverty and homelessness. In fact, after talking with the N double A C P Economic Justice Task Force, I received an A plus on my poverty and homelessness reduction plan. So that plan includes building a permanent day shelter to complement the Veterans Coming Home Center, which currently does amazing work, but is out of space. Also, creating a compensation fund to help organizations that currently have the space to provide emergency shelter, but don't have the funds to create that space to be accommodating. So for example, everything from meeting insurance requirements to retrofitting that space to welcome our homeless neighbors. That's very important. Also, I signed the Missouri Jobs with Justice pledge, and that is a pledge that is a candidate says that they are committed to pursuing policies that look through an equity lens of how we can elevate those who have often been forgotten by public policy. This is critical to my message.
Thank you, Justin. Alex. Welcome. Your answer, sir.
So I see the issue with poverty as being, one, connected with jobs in a lot of cases, particularly in the Ozarks, because our salaries are quite a bit lower than other regions of the U.S. So a good way to improve that is to increase competition for workers and make sure that we bring in good quality jobs that pay high salaries into the region. And the other side of that is to protect and defend our locally owned small businesses. This is something that I think city council historically has overlooked quite a bit. We need to make sure that we take care of the businesses that are owned and started by local people, because that's a really great way to increase someone's income when you can keep money in the local economy and you can go down to the corner store owned by your neighbor, spend your money there. That keeps our money local and that allows people to raise themselves up out of poverty by building their own small businesses.
Randy, what would you do to help alleviate poverty?
No, you really can't talk about poverty, remediating, lessening, mitigating poverty unless you talk about economic development. Springfield is not doing a very good job as far as economic development is concerned. We really need to create a brand for Springfield, a brand, you know, that has a niche. A brand is everything when you're building a community and you're trying to bring new businesses into the city of Springfield. So I think we really need to look at economic development with more jobs that are better paid, better benefits. You know, we will have a higher demand for our labor force. And then our labor force that we currently have can have higher wages and higher earnings. And it's really all connected. You can't speak about one without the other. When we talk about economic development and creating this brand for Springfield, we really need to look at our vibrant, at our rich history. Let's tie into the Springfield Wagon Company. Let's tie into the Trail of Tears. Let's try, you know, tie into some of these other things to create something, something that's timeless so that we can attract people and also retain our youth that leave the second they get their diploma.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Heather?
You know, as a workforce and economic development professional, I've learned that the best way to tackle poverty is through a good job. A good job that pays family sustaining wages is essential. And I think as we've all been learning, as we've all been learning, you know, especially since COVID hit, you know, we've got some industries that are really struggling right now, not only to find workers, but we've got workers who have been displaced from industries such as tourism and hospitality. And so I think that those are two primary areas that are really going to need to be addressed in a serious and meaningful way. Another thing that I think is really important is for the people who are experiencing poverty to have a voice in the decision-making and policy creation that affects them. So, you know, when we look at city council, you know, we may not see that representation. And I think that it's important that council has someone who can listen to them and is going to be representative.
Thank you very much. And I just want to again thank all of you for being here, saying you're going to be here, and then following through and being here, because this is a great opportunity for voters to be able to hear what you all stand for on the issues. My question for each of you deals specifically with COVID-19. This pandemic has created some long-term issues when it comes to the loss of jobs, businesses in our community having to shut down. I'd like to get each of your thoughts and what priorities you have once we get past the immediate health crisis of this event. So we look beyond to where we think we're going to have good numbers health-wise, where we can start to open things up and the restrictions are lifted. What will it take next to be able to address the economic issues that have been created by COVID? And we'll start with candidate Burnett.
Absolutely. So it's important that as we're looking to recovery, that, one, we have to continue to be mindful of the fact that we're not out of the woods yet. We need to continue wearing a mask. We need to continue social distancing until we get those vaccination levels up to 70% or above. That's what the scientists are saying that we need to arrive at before we can say that we're safe, we're out of the pandemic. Two, we need to ensure that we're looking at public policy in a way that we can re-energize our economic sector in town. So pursuing policies that encourage development in Springfield that brings good, high-paying living wage jobs is vitally important. I'm excited about Costco coming to Springfield. Costco pays living wages. And also, another component of this is we have 59% of Springfieldians are tenants. They're renters. We've seen so many renters be put in desperate situations currently because they can't afford to make their rent. It's important that we're looking at public policy in a way to protect our renters, and that includes a tenant's bill of rights. And so addressing what is known as slum lords, who have taken advantage of renters for a long time, is so important right now. And that's a priority of mine. I've met with the Springfield Tenants Unite, and we're going to be working on public policy to address that situation immediately after the election.
Thank you. Mr. Ayton?
Yeah, so this whole thing arose because the current mayor and the current city council chose to shut down the local economy. When the pandemic began in March, what they effectively did is they closed all of our small and local businesses while keeping the big box stores and the big national corporations open. So that effectively funneled everybody into one location, like Walmart. That's not going to do anything to stop the spread of a virus. All it did was severely damage our local economy, and we lost dozens of local businesses. Hundreds of local businesses were impacted. People lost their jobs. And the city council is unapologetic about what it did to our economy. So the first thing to rebuilding is making sure that we have a fair playing field for our local businesses and that we allow them to continue to operate. That's the most important thing. We can't allow the city council to pick winners and losers in the economy.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And candidate Allen, your response?
Yeah, first of all, I commend city council and the mayor for having the courage to stand up to adopt that very controversial policy. And I've got to say, you know, when we're looking at the value of life, I think it certainly outweighs the temporary interruption to business that we have all suffered over the last year or so. And also, I think we need to listen to the experts. Everybody's got their opinions. There's pundits on every street corner telling us this, telling us that. But when we have mercy and Cox and the health department's begging us to wear masks and to social distance and to limit, you know, businesses in the area to save a life, who wouldn't do that? Who wouldn't do what's required to save a life? I think also, as far as today, it sounds like I think city council is going to vote, I think, this on April the 5th in regards to the continuation of the ordinance. And we have a huge pent-up demand, so I think as soon as we can get through a little more of this virus, I think that we will see great things.
Okay. All right, Jason, we're going to go to you. I'm sorry, go ahead. Hardinger, sorry, Ms. Hardinger, go ahead.
Thank you so much. So, you know, when the pandemic first started, I was working for Taney County Partnership at the time. And a lot of what I focused on for, you know, about six to eight months was assisting small businesses with understanding the PPP loan process and everything that was required to help keep those businesses afloat. I also spoke to, gosh, it must be hundreds of people who were needing to file for unemployment. And so really understanding the impact that some of COVID-19 has had on those folks, I think, is really crucial. I think with some of this economic recovery funding that's coming down from the federal government, city of Springfield is set to receive, I believe, over $30 million in funds. I think we're going to see some opportunity to do some real good in the community and help meet some of these needs we're talking about.
Again, we are talking with the candidates for General Counsel seat A, Alex Ayton, Justin Burnett, Randy Allen, Heather Hardinger. And this is the seat that is being vacated by Jan Fisk, who is not running for another term. We're going to move to our second round of questioning, and this is kind of a rapid-fire individual questions, and again, 60 seconds to answer. And we'll start with my colleague, Jason Wertz.
Justin, this is a question for you. The last time you were on council, you resigned from your seat, then you changed your mind, then you resigned again when you moved out of the zone. Obviously, running for general seat means unless you move out of the city, it's not a problem. But how can a voter be sure you won't fail to serve a full term?
Absolutely. I'm committed to serving the citizens of Springfield. That's why I'm actually running, because folks approached me and said they wanted me to run in these very difficult times. Someone who has an ear for the people, who's not, you know, being funded by special interest groups, who's being funded by individuals, and someone who has a heart to really get into these issues like poverty and homelessness and provide lasting solutions and bring hope to people's lives. And that is important to me, both as an individual, as a person of faith. It's a conviction that is at the core of who I am, is recognizing the value of people and people-centered public policy. And so as we look forward, we're going to see, one of the first things I'm going to do in office is hold a town hall about the upcoming stimulus funds, around 39 million the city of Springfield is going to have to allocate to these very important causes. And we're going to have a town hall about those priorities, and the community can weigh in on that.
Thank you. This next question is addressed to Mr. Ayton. You've identified your opposition to the city's shutdown last spring and allowing big box stores to stay open as a main impetus in your decision to run for council. What would you have done different considering communities around the state and around the nation were making similar decisions at that time?
So the main thing here is that the city's decision to shut down our local businesses, that was not a health decision, that was an economic decision, because funneling everybody into one location doesn't stop the spread of a virus. Nobody's contesting that. What that did do is it broke our local economy. So we couldn't, you know, we could have done a lot better with that. If you keep more places open, you're going to be spreading people out rather than concentrating them anyway. And that's an important point to make. Nobody's ever contested that. So I take issue with people who say that, you know, this is saving lives. You know, I don't see how shutting down a woman's clothing store is going to save people's lives when Walmart was open through the entire pandemic selling clothing. So it's just a fairness issue. It's very simple. This is a fairness issue. The city council likes to prioritize large businesses and corporations, and that's just not going to fly in the Ozarks. We need fairness for all of our local businesses.
This is a question for Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen, you told my colleague Katie Cull, the Springfield News Leader, that it was a mistake for the council to approve the elevation development in Galloway Village, saying, quote, "It's not fair for a developer to blow in, forever change the landscape, and then blow out of town," unquote. The developer of this project is a Springfield resident. So why should this resident not have the same rights as other Springfield citizens to determine the use of their privately-owned property?
Whoa, different standard altogether. We have one developer who wants to blow in, change the landscape, forever blow out. One person, one residence. Meanwhile, we have 2,100 people concerned about this exact issue, you know, that are affiliated with Galloway that don't want him there. Okay, so one versus 2,100. I mean, I think that's an easy answer. We need to do what the communities want us to do. Galloway especially is a prized community. It's a wonderful community because it was built by the people that live in the Galloway area. So I think we need to be more representative of the people of Springfield. And think about that also, I mean, who's behind this development? Is it the Springfield Area Chamber of Commerce? Is it the HBO? Which of these political organizations are the ones behind all of this, you know, trying to sway city council? City council needs to listen to its people. They need to listen to all of us, not just the few, not just the developers, not just those people that basically bankroll their endorsed candidates. I mean, city council needs to listen to all of us, everyone.
If I may follow up just very quickly on that, sir, you kind of really didn't answer the question in the sense that shouldn't that developer have the same rights as the other citizens of Springfield?
Not when it comes to that development in someone else's neighborhood, not at all. He didn't have the same rights as 2,100 people under any standard.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. My next question is for Ms. Hardinger, and you've been quoted as saying the city's masking ordinance helped save lives and was a common sense way to limit the spread of disease in our community. Health leaders agree with you, obviously. Do you agree with the thresholds that the current council has laid out that would lead to the lifting of the current ordinance, and why or why not?
Yeah, that's a really great question. And, you know, I think that, you know, that decision is a sound one. I think, you know, looking back at some of the decisions that we've made as a community over the past several months, I think that we have a real opportunity to look at, you know, some of the things that, you know, maybe we could have done differently. But I think overall, masking was essential to keeping all of us safe. I not only followed the local health department's leadership on this, but definitely was following some national trends as well. I've got family members all over the country that visit Springfield, and, you know, I wanted to make sure that they were safe in our community, so super crucial.
All right. That round of questioning was so much fun, we're going to do it again. How about that? All right. We're going to start this time around with candidate Justin Burnett. And a big part of your campaign for council is addressing homelessness and poverty in the city, yet there are several legal barriers, as you know, to opening more homeless shelters in this community. What needs to be done to try to remove some of those barriers?
I think it's very important that we're having that open dialogue between neighborhoods and explaining how important it is for us to have that partnership as a city with nonprofits. And I think a lot of times when we've seen failures, it's because of a lack of communication, a lack of taking that effort as a community and as leaders to say, look, we, as a community, we have to address this. This is, you know, at the center of who we are. I believe Springfield is a loving city, and I think that's very important, and we're conveying that in public policy. I also think that as we're looking at these issues, there are things in the broader scope that we need to be looking at as well to address issues of poverty and economic inequality. One of the things that I would like to do is see Springfield have a discussion on passing "Ban the Box" here locally. And what "Ban the Box" does is that gives individuals who have had a past criminal record a chance to begin a second life by having a face-to-face discussion with an employer. And I think that's going to be a huge benefit to both.
Thank you, Justin. Now, a question for Mr. Ayton. You posted on Facebook in December attacking the Springfield N double A C P, the Connecting Grounds, and Brentwood Christian Church as, quote, "well-funded out-of-towners" when those groups were considering legal action regarding the city's restrictions on tents that impacted the homeless. All three of those organizations are Springfield-based organizations who've been working to help the homeless. How would you respond to a voter who would see that and may have concerns that you would jump to conclusions before you have all the facts?
To be clear, what I did is I questioned the N double A C P's original letter to the city about addressing homelessness. So that original letter really left out a lot of organizations, a lot of churches, and all the great work that is being done by a lot of nonprofits in this city. Springfield's a very collaborative city, and all of these organizations work together very well. And we've seen that over the course of many decades. And, you know, that's the kind of thing that should continue. And I was concerned about the tone that I saw in that first letter, because it really seemed to be saying that they're not doing enough, and it was blaming churches, it seemed, for not doing enough, and also implied the threat of a lawsuit if the city didn't go along with their proposals. Now, I have to give them credit where credit is due. The second letter that the N double A C P wrote to the city of Springfield was very nicely worded. They came around and acknowledged all the good work being done by nonprofits in this city, and I congratulated them on that as well.
Okay, thank you. My next question is for Randy Allen, and this question deals with crime fighting. Sir, you say that you have spoken with the Springfield Police Officers Association, and the number one concern is recruitment and retention. How do you propose the city make it more attractive to be in uniform in a world these days where we hear so much about defunding the police?
Boy, you hit that nail right on the head. How about this? Never a better time to be a cop. Never a better time to be a cop. A theme. The H R department, the police department, need to get with it. Let's create this particular theme, and let's fund it. Let's give out some money. How about a $10,000 recruitment bonus payable over five years, $2,000 each year in arrears? How about a retention bonus? You know, some of our police officers only make like 17 bucks an hour. Actually, them plus their family of four qualifies for free and reduced lunches under Title I. I mean, that's not right. These brave officers are out there risking their lives for us each and every day. We really need to get into action and make it a theme, make it a mission. Let's wake up and do something about it. Hey, I've been a businessman for bitty, bitty years. We've had recruitment issues all the time, but you throw money at it, people chase the dollars. They want compensation just like the rest of us.
And our final question, the individual segment, which I'm sure is a much-welcome relief to all the candidates, it goes to Heather. Heather, you mentioned in a Reddit Ask Me Anything that you feel a majority of Springfield residents don't want to see a tax increase, but then talked about good done by tax increases. Do you want to increase taxes on the citizens? And if you want to increase taxes, what for?
That's a really great question. So I completely understand that raising taxes is not a very popular topic of conversation. I think keeping our tax base low is super important. At the same time, you know, there are tax measures that have come to a vote that have really done some good in the community. I think the one that I mentioned in the Reddit thread was the O T C ballot measure, Prop A and Prop B, that definitely brought a lot of support to O T C to support our local industries, manufacturing being one of them. So, you know, I think I support tax increases if therefore a reason that's going to benefit a majority of the people in Springfield, and the people should be able to decide.
Thank you. And Jason, we're going to do one more question before we get to the closing statements, and we'll let you ask that question. And again, all candidates will answer this one.
And I promise you, this will be a lot less painful than the individual questions. The question I'm going to ask you is, given Springfield's status as the third-largest city in the state, there are some people in town discussing the idea of, like Kansas City and St. Louis, it might be time for the council to move to paid positions for city council and mayor. How do you feel about this? And do you think it's time for Springfield to do it? Justin?
So as someone running for council, I don't think it would be appropriate for me with the obvious conflict of interest to advocate for that. I understand that as a city, as we're growing, why folks would be suggesting that. But currently, I see too big of a conflict to advocate for that. What I'm focused on as a candidate is making sure that we are moving our community forward, that we're, as the third-largest city in Missouri, that we have a seat at the table in decisions that affect the entire state and Jeff City as well. And that's why I've reached out to our state representatives, because I want to ensure that as a community, that we are advocating for measures that will help Springfieldians, that will help them meet their obligations, help them put food on the table, help them make the utility payments. And that's vitally important to me and it's at the center of my campaign.
Mr. Ayton, same question, sir.
I think that paying city council members would be an excellent way to open the city council to regular folks. Right now, the city council is mostly made up of people who are retired and independently wealthy, and that's a very good thing, because that comes with a lot of experience and a lot of skill sets. So that's a good thing. But when the entire city council is so homogeneous, it really makes it not a, you know, you need a diverse set of viewpoints on the city council that's representative of all the people who live in our community. And in order to do that, you have to make it financially feasible for people to actually serve their city. If people have to quit their jobs and lose all their income, well, there's almost nobody left in the city who wants to run or can run for these positions. So by paying people, we'll allow common, regular folks who just want to do good in their city the opportunity to serve Springfield.
Mr. Allen?
Did someone say pay city council? What? Excuse me? Absolutely, let's do it. And we should do it, and I'll tell you why. I'm retired, so for me, it's not that big of a deal. But what about others? What about other people that actually want to serve the city? I've wanted to serve the city since 1985. I couldn't afford it. I didn't have the time. I didn't have the resources. There's not a chance anywhere that I would have been able to take the time to serve the city through a city council position ever until I retired. Also, I think, on the other hand, there's way too much influence that's going on right now. Let's look at the city council today. Let's look at a lot of the people that are candidates for city council today. And let's look at the Springfield Area Chamber of Commerce. They have spent well over $100,000, you know, paying the campaign for the people that they endorse. I mean, who can compete with that? I mean, I was likely to raise $5,000, you know, per my NBC reporting here just recently. Nobody can do this under the current scenario, and it really needs to change. And we also need to limit campaign contributions. Thank you.
Heather?
You know, this is a very interesting question. My mind is like going in a lot of places. I volunteer a lot, so I'm not necessarily motivated by money, so this may not be a great question to ask me. But I have a job. I have a full-time job. And actually, almost every member of council currently has a job outside of serving on council. I think there are a couple that are retired. So, you know, I think that allowing this position to be unpaid gives us some advantages. I think that it helps the people who are running for office do it for the right reasons. They know it's for free. They know they're not getting compensation from it. You know, I think that there are other models, on the other hand, other cities who are paying their council people, and they're seeing some success there. So, you know, I don't think it would make too much difference for me. You know, as I mentioned, I do work a full-time job. But I think that ensuring that council people are focused on the local issues is really crucial.
All right. Thank you all. And now it's your chance. We've been asking a lot of questions. It's your chance to say what you want for the next 60 seconds. So we're going to go around the room with our candidates for General Counsel seat A here on K W T O, live from our studios tonight, and just start with your feelings, your thoughts, and we'll start with you, Mr. Burnett.
I'd like to close by addressing a situation that has been at the forefront of people's minds this week who have been watching local elections, and that is the anonymous, mean-spirited, hateful text messages, mailers, the attack ads that have been arriving in mailboxes. We even saw an arsonist campaign sign on fire. What the heck is going on in Springfield? This is ridiculous. It's vile. We have to call it out. And as a candidate, I'm calling it out as a citizen, as a person of faith. And growing up, I used to watch Mr. Rogers Neighborhood on PBS, such a good show. And this probably makes me seem a little ancient. But, you know, if we can get back to as a community, looking at each other as neighbors, you know, having discussions, but having them in a kind, civil manner without name-calling and meanness, that is so crucial. And that's at the core of who I am and what I will be advocating for as a leader, is that style of leadership, bringing people together with kindness.
Mr. Burnett, thank you. Mr. Ayton?
So this election, this race in particular for seat A on the city council, is actually a lot simpler than it may seem with four candidates, because all three of my opponents, they support the current mayor, and that means that they support what the mayor has done. They support the fact that we still have all of these problems due to his lockdown that happened in March. And, you know, the current mayor has been on city council for six years, and he's done nothing to address the fact that we are 40 police officers short because we won't pay competitive salaries compared to neighboring municipalities. So there's a lot of problems with the status quo. There's a lot of problems with how the city leadership has been handling our city and the fact that they take care of special interests first rather than taking care of the people first. And it's important to get new voices, folks who aren't doing the same thing that the current leadership is doing and don't agree with the current leadership. We need diversity of opinion, and we need that on the city council.
Mr. Ayton, thank you. Mr. Allen?
You know, Justin, so you know, I watched Captain Kangaroo, right? Okay, got it. Okay, let's see, also, I also denounced the vulgarities in the elections just recently, and it's really crazy times, there's no question about that. And I really request that people sort of respect the ideologies of each other and that type of thing. We really, as a community, need to at least unite in that regard. Let's see, I've been a businessperson for 40 years and have been involved with several
businesses and have done a lot in that regard. As far as city council, as far as the city of Springfield, the business side of the city of Springfield, you know, I don't think that's an issue for me at all. I've got experience with companies that are bigger than the city of Springfield in both dollars and number of employees. So the business side doesn't bother me at all. What I'm really concerned, though, and this is something new and something new in my new journey through listening, we need to focus on social issues. We need to take care of so many different things that city council just seems to run and hide from.
Mr. Allen, thank you. Ms. Hardinger?
You know, I'm running for city council for several reasons. But, you know, the bottom line is I know I'm the right person for the job. So I feel like in a lot of ways, what I've done through my career, what I've done through my volunteer service, has really prepared me for this area of service. I'm ready to work. I want to work to make the Springfield of today and tomorrow, you know, a great place for our kids and our grandkids to grow up. I've got two nieces. I've got one in the public school system. You know, I want to create a Springfield that's going to be great for them in the future. You know, my experience working with, you know, the employment community, including businesses, has taught me that when we have the resources we need, our community sees higher wages, we see more consumer options, and a better quality of life for everyone. So I feel like that's what we deserve, and I'm going to work to ensure we get it.
Folks, thanks to each of you for participating in our debate tonight. Glad to have you.
Yeah, thank you.
Glad to be here.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes the debate for general council, seat A. And when we come back, we'll be joined by the two folks who are running for council, Zone One. You're listening to the Springfield City Council and mayoral debate on 93.3 and AM 560 KWTO.
You guys, that was incredible. I mean, you guys, very engaging, just like Fox.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Very engaging. It was really pleasant. I was expecting to pass out and die.
So one too bad, then?
You guys, it was uncomfortable. It really did. I looked at the question, too.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Good luck to each of you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thanks for coming on the table.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. I brought my basket.
I know. I heard that. But when they started, I did that to repeat the question. The problem is, I didn't want the father to worry about talking because we don't have all the bikes. I didn't want to do the specific things he said.
Who won the coin flip? Did you guys flip a coin to settle? You did? Somebody got a coin?
I had a coin out.
Huh?
I said I had a coin out.
Okay, we'll do it the old-fashioned way. Even or odd? Even or odd?
Odd.
It's three. You'll be position one, you'll be position two.
Okay, who's in one, who's in two, Jason?
She's, uh, Isabel.
Okay. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I'm in two.
So we're just listening to the debate. So you kind of know what you're ready for.
Yeah. It's like, what do I have on my face?
General question, pointed questions. And then, well, you know, no offense to my colleagues in the media, no one's really asked you guys hard-hitting questions. So we were kind of like, well, we should at least ask something that's got some bite to it. But we, like I said, we're not doing it in a sense to embarrass you. We just, we went and what would the ordinary average person want to ask? And that's how it works.
I've had some interesting questions from...
Well, welcome back to the Springfield City Council debate on KWTO. We now welcome the two candidates for Springfield City Council, Zone One. We have Isabel Jimenez Walker and Angela Romine. I want to thank both of you for being here this evening. And we'll start the questioning with my colleague, Jason Ward.
We're going to ask you just a general question to both of you, and we're going to start with Isabel. Your question is, the city's been struggling with homelessness issues that have really been exposed because of the COVID-19 pandemic as being as bad as they are. What would you do to make it easier for the city to work with local charities to help our communities homeless?
Well, currently, I am on the NAACP Economic Justice Task Force that has been addressing these issues since November. And I'm also involved with Community Partnership of the Ozarks, Ozarks Alliance to End Homelessness. And so between those two organizations, we have been addressing these issues and presenting recommendations to city council. And there's been not only city, but state and federal money that have been put out there to help with the homeless situation. I know that it's only a Band-Aid right now, but we're coming up with a plan to present, that's a long-term plan to put in place that will help homeless people.
And the same question for Angela.
All right. Well, there are several charities and nonprofits here in Springfield to help with homeless issues and low poverty. So the question is, why are there still a homeless problem? I know that the city council has had listening sessions, and they have had some great ideas, but they stop at that. They don't have any action planned, and they don't follow through. So I would like to see some of those plans again and implement some of those things that they have and actually do an action, not just type it up nice and neat and put it out for the public to see.
All right. Thank you. And my first question for both candidates is, Northwest Springfield is frequently associated with high crime numbers, high poverty rates, nuisance properties. Those are pretty broad categories. How would each of you on city council work to improve the quality of life and the people who live and work in Zone One? And we'll start with Ms. Walker.
So with the crime rate, we would start with the police department. They are currently short of staff, and that is one of the most important issues that we need to address that first. And par officers, the par officers, there are some par officers that are assigned to more than one neighborhood. And I think that each neighborhood association should have its own par officer. As well as for nuisance property, I am the co-chair for the Housing Collaborative for the Community Partnership of the Ozarks. And we have, we started a task force last year on nuisance properties and just recently got the neighborhood associations involved with our task force where we're addressing that. But one of the biggest issues was planning the development department did not have enough staff either. And so they just recently hired a new director and just voted at the last city council meeting for three new inspectors. So I think that is a great start there.
Okay. And go ahead with your response, please.
Can you repeat the question again?
Sure.
Sorry.
Sure. No problem at all. Northwest Springfield is frequently associated with high crime numbers, high poverty rates, nuisance properties. Those are pretty broad categories. How would each of you on city council work to improve the quality of life and the people who live and work in Zone One? And we'll start with Ms. Walker.
So with the crime rate, we would start with the police department. They are currently short of staff, and that is one of the most important issues that we need to address that first. And par officers, the par officers, there are some par officers that are assigned to more than one neighborhood. And I think that each neighborhood association should have its own par officer. As well as for nuisance property, I am the co-chair for the Housing Collaborative for the Community Partnership of the Ozarks. And we have, we started a task force last year on nuisance properties and just recently got the neighborhood associations involved with our task force where we're addressing that. But one of the biggest issues was planning the development department did not have enough staff either. And so they just recently hired a new director and just voted at the last city council meeting for three new inspectors. So I think that is a great start there.
Okay. And go ahead with your response, please.
Can you repeat the question again?
Sure.
Sorry.
Sure. No problem at all. Northwest Springfield is frequently associated with high crime numbers, high poverty rates, and nuisance properties. These are pretty broad categories. How would you work as a member of city council to improve the quality of life that the people who live and work in Zone One?
Okay, first of all, a minute is not enough to cover all that is in that question, because there's lots of...
I understand.
There's lots of levels. So we have a drug issue, first of all, because of I-44. We do have issues with being short on our police force, and we need to look at why that is. And then homelessness is an issue, and of course, poverty. So we need to focus on development and economical growth in Zone One, and that would help a lot of the issues that we have. We need to look at supporting and keep growing the drug courts that we have, because they help people with rehab and testing to make sure they're off of drugs and stuff like that. And collaborative work with county sheriff and the county prosecutor. So it's a whole big thing that just can't fit into a minute answer.
No, I totally understand that.